Call to order the school committee meeting April 25th, 2024. Bella, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Fisher?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Pastor Polo?
Here.
Here.
First want to thank Claire and Bella for helping us get this meeting started tonight. Great job.
Yeah, that was never stopping.
Yeah, you guys, you got a job if you need one. So we'll start with the report of the school committee chair. I just want to say a couple things first off. Saturday, 10:00 a.m. at the town hall auditorium, they're opening the time capsule from the old high school. So I think the high school was built in 1954.
What was it, '13?
It's '10, yeah.
You probably have to be there, right?
Yeah. So at 10 o'clock at the auditorium, I'm sure there'll be a lot of cool stuff in there. You know, maybe Fonzie's leather jacket, things like that from those days. So also want to just take this moment just to say, hey, talking about donations to the schools and stuff, as our staff is aware, solicitation of funds is not allowed by school employees, nor is any use of any crowdfunding platforms. That said, the Saguas Public Schools may accept donations for specific uses, but any donations must be brought to the school committee and approved by the committee prior to the use. Only the school committee can accept donations. It has been brought to the attention of the school committee that staff members are collaborating with businesses and other entities to secure funding for specific school-related purposes, which is fine. While their donations may be accepted, they have to be accepted by the school committee. So just make sure you go through the process. Everything needs to be fully transparent. All the donations must be made in the correct manner. This is being mentioned in an attempt to make certain that no one unintentionally violates this because sometimes it's easy to say, hey, I'm doing this, can you donate that? And what happens is it just protects everyone involved. So I just want to make sure we talk about that. The other thing, the North Shore Honor Society, we had, I think it was 10 students that are being honored by the North Shore Honor Scholars. They are Jessica Brenberg, who you guys have met, she's come to the meetings, class president, awesome. Jordan Chinta, Sofia Delois, Catherine D'Souza, Sarah Doran, Travy Goyet, Paige Hogan, Gabriela Huber, Madison Rivera, and Sarah Wovekin. So want to congratulate them, great job on what they're doing. Also, just want to talk about some of the traffic concerns. When parents are dropping off and picking up, especially at the complex, I saw it this morning and I was like, please don't drop your kids off on an off ramp. It just, it boggles my mind. You take that right and you drop them off at the off ramp. I see some trucks bowing down, taking that turn. Please don't do that. If you're in a hurry, you want to make the turn, I get it, but don't do that. It's just not safe. And then just follow the rules. I think things go a lot smoother if someone just doesn't stop their cow in the middle, stop it, shut it off, and move to bring their kid in. Just be cognizant of the rules, that's all I would say, so.
Yeah, you know what, Mr. Chairman, I mean, it's rapid, I'm going to tell you, your laziness does not trump child safety at all. So if you're lazy, that's up to you, but don't risk everybody else's life because you want to save a couple extra seconds or a couple extra steps. I'll be a little more blunt for you, so.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, I, this is kind of off the cuff because I saw it this morning and I'm like, yeah, that doesn't look like a good idea. And it wasn't, if it was one cow, I'd say, okay. It was like five or six people because you know, you get in that traffic and you see it and you're like, what are you doing? You know, so just like I said, if you need a little more time, give yourself a little more time in the morning. So, and then we'll go over to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you very much. I was going to mention the time capsule, so you already did that for me. I did want to announce last meeting, we had total chaos here. At 7:00 at the complex, they're going to be performing in a showcase with other schools. So if you, if you, if you heard them last week or you've heard them in the past, they're a sensational group and they're performing tonight at 7:00. Well worth, well worth the price of admission.
Oh, that's the name of them? I thought you were just talking about our meeting.
Along that line, I do want to announce the musical for this year. It's Working, a Musical. It's Thursday, May 2nd, Friday, May 3rd, and Saturday, May 4th, all at 7:00 at the Lemoine Mitchell Performing Arts Center at the complex. I do have flyers for each of you, I'll just pass them, you guys can pass them down. Again, they do a great job, it's well worth attending. I'm not familiar with this musical, but I hear, I hear great things from the kids and Mr. Reponey, who's running the, who's directing it this year.
It is a nice night out here.
Yeah, it is.
They do a great job. And you know, not to interrupt you, but Saguas has great arts and I think we don't do a good enough job of promoting that, but we do have one of the better arts department around. So I'd just like to point that out.
Yep. To add to Mr. Serino's notations, we do also have two students that are going to be recognized by the Northeastern Conference as scholar athletes from Saguas. They do, they do have a banquet coming up. They are Jessica Brenberg and Braden Fiala. And again, I'll probably try to have them come in just so you can acknowledge their accomplishments. And before I turn it over to Dr. Lukey, I did want to publicly thank Mr. Lavoy. He did the Euro Trip, I don't know if he called it Euro Trip 2024, and he took 26 students to, and I think I'll get this right, they went to London, Paris, Brussels, and Amsterdam over the last 10 days. They got back yesterday afternoon and they, they had a great time. And it's something that he's done for, I want to say decades now, I mean. And it's a wonderful opportunity for the students and I do think it's something really special for the, for the students and the families is, and they say, you know, experience learning through travel, or travel is education, and I think it does go a long way and I'm really happy that he does that. It's a tremendous amount of work to arrange it, to chaperone it, to coordinate it, and then to man it for, you know, 10 days in a foreign, in foreign countries. So I just think, I give him the utmost credit and I do thank him and the chaperones who, who helped make it possible, so.
You know, my kids go on, went on this trip and the trip's so valuable, it really is. You know, we got young kids here, when it's available to you guys, if you guys need help in fundraising or anything, please reach out to any of us. I don't know where we'll be then, but it's a worthwhile trip.
Yeah, my son just came, he was on the trip with Mr. Lavoy. I was worried about it, I'm going to say, because I figured he's going with his friends and they're not going to really pay attention to history. I was glad to see that they don't let you too close to the stones of Stonehenge.
Nope.
I picture him being like Rusty from the European.
Yeah.
But yeah, no, he had a blast and he actually learned a lot. He was, I expected a little different Brody when I came back.
Yep.
And it was real different. He was talking about history and stuff. I was like, what the hell is this kid doing? But I know, he had a blast, so.
They got to see Les Mis in London, which was nice.
Yeah.
So they really enjoyed that, so. And last up for my report, I did want to bring in Dr. Lukey from the principal of the Belmonte here, the Steam Academy. She piloted a six-week enrichment program that I had, think had tremendous results, but I'll let her describe it and let her recognize some of the students and families that are here.
Thank you, Mr. Hashem. Thank you for inviting us here tonight. I would first like to thank the group of teachers that are here as they have stepped up. Some that couldn't make it as well have stepped up to support this Belmonte Steam Academy enrichment program. I'm so impressed with their dedication, their enthusiasm for the program, and like I said, we were piloting this. I was pretty persistent with Mr. Hashem and Ms. Tarbin to really get this going since I became principal. I'm really passionate in creating a positive culture for kids and supporting learning and academics while also they can have a little bit of fun too. And this has been a true cross-section for some socialization for kids and really, some really great learning that was going on and some skills along the way that you'll hear from some of our people here tonight. But even since the post-pandemic, you know, this creation of this enrichment program is, has come out with a lot of positive experiences. Community building, personal growth, adaptability and resilience, sense of purpose, making positive connections. They've been with different grade levels of students too, with peers. That's, I've seen it firsthand, the sociability, and even a stress relief for the kids too. It's been great. They've been learning and discovering new things and I feel like their confidence, their empowerment, and even empathy for each other. I've watched how they were mentoring each other. Some of the upper grade level students were mentoring the younger kids. So I really want to thank our parents who have supported us with this as well. We would love to have even more kids part of this program. We did it through a lottery system because of space, but again, we're piloting it and our goal is to keep this going. And it was really, it was tremendous. We can just go to the next slide and I can, so our teachers, we did an arts and crafts club, boards game club, golf basics. You see the teacher, Ms. Baudo, for the newspaper. Mr. Bertram was our golf, Ms. Krasik was boards and games. Ms. Kayla and Ms. Hinton, our top one was arts and crafts of interest level, believe it or not, they love doing the arts and crafts. But again, I think it will keep going. The Spanish club with Ms. Knowles, study skills and strategies with Ms. Tolios, taking the stage, theater basics with Ms. Gravel. And then our girls on the run kept going here for the spring because it was such a big hit in the fall. And I know Mr. Palmer, he's here, we had robotics in the fall as well, which was a tremendous success. And it's just the learning and the education and their confidence levels that I've seen with these kids, and I know the teachers have as well, has been, it's just been a tremendous, tremendous experience. And it is a passion of mine to, to get this, to support kids, and sometimes it gives them a reason to come to school. So if that works, that's something to keep them going. I'd like to bring up first on our slideshow, yeah, Ms. Gravel, because she had done the theater program, so she's going to talk to you a little bit about that. And any of the students, we asked students to make it if they could from our theater program, if they want to kind of move up front with Ms. Gravel. Do we have any theater kids here? Yeah, okay. She's going to give you a little spiel.
Want to stand behind Brody? Come here. Come on over. Come on over, friends. Hi, everyone. My name's Bethany Gravel. I'm a first-year fifth-grade teacher at the Belmonte and I come from a background in public programming, community outreach, and includes theater instruction, which I've done for many years. So I was very excited for the opportunity to bring some theater fun to the Belmonte. With me, I have Amelia, Elizabeth, and Kyle, three of my thespians, as we call it in the theater world, who really dove into the process with me as we piloted this program. So just a little bit about the benefits of theater play and exploration in theater. We've been talking a lot about social emotional learning at the Belmonte and this is an incredible vessel for that kind of exploration and growth. Theater play builds self-esteem, it builds tolerance and empathy, which especially in the social media age where we have a lot of disconnects that pop up in our society and our, our culture and our community, this is a really unifying activity for kids and adults alike. Creative thinking skills, problem-solving skills, my students can attest, you have to figure it out when you're up on stage, you have to think critically, you need to communicate with your peers, which is what we kind of started with in the first couple sessions, theater games, building those relationships, those communication skills with each other through improv and other kinds of activities. One thing that's really important with theater is sustained focus and concentration. So it's a really fun and exciting way to hone those skills that you're applying in school every single day. Flexing your literacy skills, obviously you're having to read a script and comprehend what your character is feeling, thinking, and trying to say. It's an incredible outlet and most of all, I hope it was fun.
Yes, it's very fun.
Would you like to say a bit about your experience, what you like about theater? Come on up, Amelia. Tell everyone your full name and what grade you're in.
Hi, my name is Amelia Westfield and I'm, and I'm in fifth grade. And my favorite part was probably when we're doing acting and I was really engaged in it because it was really fun and it was just interesting because you can speak up, and my dad does do comedy, so I want to try to do comedy while he does it.
Amazing. And I think you have that comedic flair in you. The character that Amelia played was named Frida and she was kind of like the standout girl in the, in the crowd of, of other fifth graders who got lost in a haunted house on their way to Six Flags. It's a bracing drama, comedy, there's so much going on. Another friend who would like to move up next. Kyle, come on up, my friend. Tell everyone your full name and your grade, please.
Hi, I'm Kyle Joseph Richard and I really liked.
Don't break.
I really liked theater. My favorite part was probably when we went to the auditorium and got to act on the stage. That was really fun. And I also liked the games that we played in the classroom as well. But I think I liked the auditorium because it really like brought the whole experience together.
I totally feel you on that.
That's awesome. So will you, will you stay with drama when you get into the next?
I think so.
I think you should.
Good for you.
I think you should.
You should. Just the way you took the microphone and brought it down.
Yeah, totally. Full control. Any other comments or thoughts?
I don't think so.
What about friendships? The, the guys that you became friends with in theater, were those people you were friends with before?
Nope.
So it was a great opportunity to build new friendships. We had a great cohort of gentlemen in our theater club and I really, I hope all of you guys will continue with the theater because it's great stuff.
Excellent.
Come on up, my dearest. Name and grade, please.
Elizabeth Leviney, I'm in fourth grade and my favorite part was probably going to the theater because we actually like got to like embrace our feelings and like had more room.
Yes, totally, totally. So we began the program in the classroom and with the collaboration of other teachers in the building and the folks over at KCF, Kids Come First, we were able to transition into the auditorium and be on that stage. Even without an audience, it makes such a big difference. It really pulls you into the moment. So just appreciation to Maureen for helping us bring theater to the elementary students and happy to take any questions.
So is that, is this something we can build on with, especially for this building? Is it something that?
Yeah.
Instead of being a six-week program, can we make it the year?
Yeah, I think it's, it's possible. The space is there, which is a lot of times the hardest thing if you don't have a theater in an elementary school. It's tough to put on a show, you can do it, but it makes a big difference for the kids and the experience and it really prepares them to go into middle school and high school. And as you said, Saguas has a really strong arts program. I was blown away by the middle school production, the musical, when we went to visit as a fifth grade. So I think it's a possibility, just as all things takes a little money and a little bit of commitment, so.
Well, just, please let us know what you need and, and thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks for having us.
Yeah, great job, guys.
Thank you.
There's a few pictures up there you can see for theater, but then we can keep going to our next club. So Ms. Hinton is here with some kids from arts and crafts. I'm not sure if many were able to make it.
My kids were able to.
Okay.
My friend Kayla's friends turned down.
Yep. But again, we, this was, like I said, this was our biggest interest to have some arts and crafts going. Ms. Kayla and Ms. Hinton really got this going and they did an amazing job with the kids. So Ms. Hinton can say a few words.
So some of the skills that the kids can benefit from, from arts and crafts, I have, we have right up here, self-expression, emotional regulation, social connection, creativity and innovation, sense of achievement and empathy, and perspective-taking. During our six weeks, we had lots of different art projects that we got to work on. And what interests me the most is that I would give these kids a choice of projects to do and they were very interested in doing it, getting, getting their hands dirty right away, creating, but it wasn't really focused on what they created, it was what they were doing as they were creating it. They were talking with their friends, they were relaxed, they were hanging out, they were sharing ideas and that was really, really fun for me to see. And I feel like I enjoyed it as much as they did. They got to share ideas, they shared their knowledge about slime. We made slimes our last day, that was one of my favorite activities. They all had different recipes they wanted to share or different things that they had done with slime before. It was just, it was just all around a good time. I, I loved it. I think the kids loved it. Unfortunately, they weren't able to come today. I worked with second and third graders, but we had multiple activities to do. We made, what did we do here? We had poke pictures, pixel pictures, watercolors, we made clay sculptures, we painted them. The slime was the best. I loved the fact that they were sharing and gathering knowledge about how to make the slime. And what they were really interested in is after they were done making their project, they sat down, they grabbed a piece of paper, they liked the different types of tools that I had for them to use to make like comics, and a lot of them are fantastic drawers. I was like, oh my gosh, you could be a comic book artist or you could write a book. They were so excited to take their projects home and bring them back to continue working on them. So I hope that we're able to keep this program going because I would sign up and do arts and crafts again, definitely. And seeing them with these different arts and crafts, it makes me think that we could even do a comic book like club because these kids are really into drawing. They're really into The Diary of the Wimpy Kid books or The Dogman books and all of them are type, type of like graphic comics. So I'm learning more from these kids than I did before and it's, it's nice. So that's what I wanted to say about the Arts and Crafts Club.
No, we appreciate, and like, like, like the last one with theater, is this something we can build on, right? Instead of just being a six-week thing, is this something we can build on?
Mr. Chair, yeah.
I hope.
And I'll let, I'll let them continue in a second, but when we're talking about the enrichment program, in the warrant that we put in for the enrichment program, this is basically, this was a test, this was a trial, and I think it went unbelievably well. What we're looking to do to expand this is to expand it to all the schools, expand the offerings, and I think in, in the plan that we're developing, there would be four six-week programs throughout the course of the school year. So some of them would naturally go the whole way, some would be pick and choose, and we're hoping to expand it to all the grades. So this is what we're trying, this is a micro version of what we're trying to do for next year with the warrant that we put in.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Ms. Lukey, I just want to say, I'm not surprised that the art project was such a big deal because Ms. Hinton, I've known her for like 15 years now, she had my son when he was like six months old. Everything she does is amazing, so this doesn't surprise me, so thank you.
Fabulous, yep. We can go to the next slide. There's a few pictures of arts and crafts there and you can keep going, yep, it's the kids. Does it keep going? Yep. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, so Girls on the Run, are there anybody, kids here from Girls on the Run? I'm not sure how many could make it from this group either. They're all busy with multiple activities, I know, but this is just a continuation of Girls on the Run. For those of you that, we did this in the fall, and again, this is a lot about sense of belonging, connection, physical activity, feeling good about themselves, and we've talked a lot about that. But this, they came back to me and said they wanted to run it again. So we can, we can go to the next slide. So that's Girls on the Run, there's some pics. Mr. Bertram is here and he started our golf club, so I want him to say a few words. And anybody from the golf team? I know we brought a couple. Yeah.
Yeah, we started the golf club this year and it was something I was super excited about. I think it's a great game, it's a lifelong activity that these kids can get into, it's a great social skills game. Get out there, you're in the fresh air, you're having fun, you're enjoying it. If I had to pick one word to really kind of define it as a skill that these kids learn is perseverance. It's easy to go out there and hack it up and have a tough day on the course. And it's easy to say this wasn't for me, I don't want to do it, but it just builds character, it keeps you out there, it keeps you persevering, trying to be successful in a game that's very difficult. And I thought it was super successful, the kids are super into it, they were having a bunch of fun. Like up on the slide, we just kind of went over some vocabulary for the kids because sometimes when you're, you want to get into golf, but it's hard because you don't know, maybe I have no idea what's going on with golf, I've never swung a club before, I don't know what these words mean that they're saying. So we just went over a few basic stuff to kind of introduce the game to them and we got them out in the field, on the middle of the track there, swinging the club around, just getting used to it. We ran into some rain a few days, so we kind of had to improvise, we went into the gym and we would putt around a little bit, which is a great, another aspect of the game to learn. So we just went through it, it was really awesome. I think the kids really enjoyed it and I'll let them say a little bit right now as well. We have Thomas and Logan.
Yeah. Yeah, it was a, yeah, it was a good introduction to golf and it was fun.
You don't have.
But yeah, I thought it was super successful and as one of the golf coaches at the high school, I think it's super important that we get these kids into golf at a young age so that we can have a team to go out there and compete because on the team this year, like we had several kids that had never touched the golf club before, which is okay, it's awesome to introduce them to the game at that age, but if we can get them into it at a young age and get out there and compete, I think it's a great thing for the community.
Yeah, you hit the nail on the head there because we were struggling to get numbers this year for golf. Absolutely. And I think last year too, we struggled. You're the same old as your dad and your brother. You reach down, get the younger kids, get them interested, and before you know it, we got a team again at the high school. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hinton. Thank you. Ms. Knowles was not able to make it tonight, but she did our Spanish club and the benefits of foreign language obviously is boosting confidence, improving reading skills, builds vocabulary, and creates cultures and connections. I, I want to say for foreign language, for kids young at the elementary level, they can absorb the most in learning a foreign language. So I think this was a great, she came up and offered to do this and was, did a great job with the kids. There's a few pictures, if you go to the next slide, I think she did a pinata at the end. Are there any kids from the Spanish club? I know, like I said, it's hard to get all the kids here, but that's why we put some pictures up. So they really had a great time learning and having fun. The next group, yep, is the board game club. Ms. Krasik couldn't be here tonight, but the kids were having so much fun playing games. And again, this is, gives them problem-solving skills and all different kinds of things, working together and sharing and taking turns. So we found that to be a high-interest group as well. I think there's another slide there. So basically, it's giving them that opportunity to find a way to enjoy time, but skills such as teamwork, rule following, all those different things. And when you walk, when we were walking around, I brought our school council around as well to just go in and observe and see how happy the kids were, having a great time playing all these different games. So that was a fun one too. Go next. Ms. Tolios, she ran our study skills and strategies, really kind of, I'm watching if any kids from learning strategies and study skills, and this was just Skills for Success and really developing habits, working together, they were doing, it was kind of like a homework club, but yet I could see her also reviewing with them, you know, just in general, you know, how do you study and what kinds of things do you do when you go home and do you put your phone away when you're studying and things like that? So it was really kind of, they were reviewing a lot of different things and, and really learning to get organized, but she made it fun and she made it enjoyable for the kids and I could see them working in partners and, and having a great time together. So that was another one that went very well. And we have Ms. Baudo here, who And we have Ms. Baudo here who ran our newspaper club and I think we have quite a few kids here from the newspaper club, so I'm going to invite them up. Yep. Yep.
Cut off the presses.
So listen, as I told you, I'll, I'll speak first, I'll give them information. You're going to help me pass out the newspapers and then everybody will, will have a turn to speak. Yeah, everyone will help. So right now, just come over here behind me and then once I get started, I'll call on each one of you. Oh, come on, they can't see, no. Some here and some here. You can come right here. Yes. I'll just, just get started. Hi, everyone, I'm Bridgette Baudo, I'm a fourth grade teacher here at the Belmonte Steam Academy and tonight I'm here with students from grades two through five to represent our after-school newspaper club, the Belmonte Bulletin. Thank you. Thank you for having us here this evening. I'll begin by sharing the learning content presented in our club, then my students will proudly share our first edition of the newspaper with you, and then finally, we'll hear some student remarks about the program. Week one, we began with newspaper resource review. The students were given copies and explored the Saugus Advocate, the Observer, to understand the types of articles and structure that a professional newspaper included. In our second week, we did some headline article brainstorming. In this lesson, the students were given brainstorming sheets and encouraged to select articles with topics that interested them and may be of interest to other students in our school. In the third week of our program, the students worked collaboratively on their writing. As I circulated around the classroom to offer support, I noticed a high level of peer collaboration across the different grade levels, peer encouragement and lots of student engagement. Week four, the articles were due and we worked on pictures and developing a layout. Week five, the students all became editors. We worked on revising and editing each other's work. With the deadline of a finished product on their minds, the students worked as a team to offer support and suggestions to each other's work. And then finally, week six, this past Tuesday, our first school newspaper was published. This slide shows some of the benefits of our Belmonte Bulletin Newspaper Club. First, it gave my students a, a voice and a chance to express themselves creatively. Students were allowed to select their own topics for a story as well as choose to work alone or with a partner. Experiencing flexibility within ELA content allowed the students to express themselves more creatively than many traditional school ELA lessons will allow. It provided an outlet for expression. It also improved student writing skills. When students are able to write about subjects that they're passionate about, they become better writers in the process. The students in this program were reporters and they were really excited about writing. Also, as editors, they became involved in the editing and revising process, which also encouraged them to become better writers. It provided a platform for students to further deepen their 21st century learning skills. Throughout this six-week program, the students were collaborating, communicating, applying their digital education skills, problem-solving and thinking critically and creatively. And finally, it built a sense of community and teamwork. Working together to produce a school newspaper was a bonding experience for the students and I. The students worked together from planning, researching, writing, layout and design to publishing, and it developed a sense of community and teamwork. The students can feel collaboratively proud of what they have accomplished and we all learned the value of hard work. My students will now share copies with you. We'll start with Mr. Hatch. Bring that down to hand, he's the one on the end over there, yep. Oh, we can't forget Ms., Ms., we'll go right to Mr. Tom as well, go ahead. Can you bring this one? Go right up to the board, yep. Yep. Here we go. Do you want to bring this one, Parker, right up there? Okay, everybody needs fries.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Ali and Mr. Hatch. You're just going to be fine.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Here we go. Yeah.
Mr. Palmarini made the paper.
This is nice, this is actually the first time, the first newspaper we've had that has actually factual reporting.
All right. I, I do have additional copies to share with the group. So right now, I'm going to read you off some of our articles. Okay, in our headlining article, Ava Lee and Hadley highlighted ways that students can be better prepared for MCAS testing. Their insightful article includes upcoming test dates and even a link for kids to find additional resources on the Department of Education website. Tom? Claire's opinion article is an open-ed piece and for everybody here, Claire would like you to know that the best pancakes in the town of Saugus are right here at the Belmonte Steam Academy cafeteria. They're on the lunch menu for next Tuesday. There she is.
Wow.
Thank you. Chase wrote an article on, a spot, a teacher's spotlight article on Mr. Palmarini, including details of his remarkable 38-year teaching career. Our fourth graders, Bert and Dante, put their love of reading to good use in this article. They listed book suggestions and included their five-star ratings. You can see Dogman is topping the list. They also let kids know to see Ms. Fosse at the BSA Library or Ms. Amy at the Saugus Public Library to check these books out. Ali, our second grader, he's, he spotlighted the memorable event when Lucky, the Celtics' mascot, visited our school. Gabriella and Avalina are role model students who encourage students to follow the school's expectations of being respectful, responsible, safe and kind. The newspaper team worked together to include free community events such as math tutoring and the book club at the Saugus Public Library, Garden Wonders, a free hands-on project offered through Lakeshore Learning, a free frame workshop at Home Depot and free Museum of Science passes that are available through Saugus Youth and Rec. Look no further for your spring fashion advice. Isabella and Marie are future fashion designers and they are letting you know the school-worthy trends in their informational piece. Looking for a new place to ride your bike, third-grade students Hadley and Ava Lee recommend the Rail Trail and Break Heart with a stop at Prince Pizza when you're finished. Our student Parker, a second grader, explored the structure of narrative writing in this vivid account and included a detailed comic illustration with his work. Isabella and Claire's, excuse me, Isabella and Claire love fashion and singing. If you're interested in exploring a new career, let them know. Avalina was eager to research and report on the other school clubs at Belmonte and according to her report, they were hit with all of the students. Rachel's informational article includes the details of student award ceremonies here at school. And finally, Nolan reported on the robotics club and he also included a comic for us to enjoy.
What is Steve?
Thank you for allowing us to showcase our work with the school community here tonight. At this time, I would like to turn the microphone over to my remarkable students. Why don't we start with second graders first? Okay, 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 okay. Okay, so, and then I'll go third and then fourth and fifth. Okay, so second graders, here we go. And we say your name and your grade. I'm sorry, Parker, I meant to, I meant to pass this.
My name is Parker DeThomas and I'm a second grader. My favorite part of the newspaper club was making my book and on the chrome book. The end of, I mean, in the newspaper, in the newspaper club, I wrote about the end of the world. Something I learned about in the, something I learned about in the newspaper club is, is not to, is not to make every mistake. Would you like to, would you like to join the newspaper club again?
Is something that, that to share? Is this imagination?
All right, what did, what did I, what did you like best about our news, our newspaper that I share to the administration?
Thank you, Parker.
Thank you, Parker. Good job.
Your name and your grade.
I'm Claire Vanezian, I'm a second grader in Ms. Fish's class and I was so, so, so excited when I was selected for newspaper club and I really hope I do it again. And I wanted to thank Ms. Baudo for teaching us.
Hello, my name is Isabella Bluesteen. I'm a second grade student in Ms. Hinton's class. I was in newspaper club. I wrote articles about careers and fashion with Marie. I did fashion with careers, I did Claire with Claire. And I learned how to add it. I would like to give a shout-out to Ms. Baudo for being a great teacher. I hope the programs continue. The kids really enjoy them. I hope Ms. Baudo is my fourth grade teacher. Thank you.
Thank you.
Isabella, I got one question for Isabella before she goes.
Oh, Isabella, they had a question for you. Maybe it was about fashion.
Can you help us out with a little fashion thing here? Is the superintendent's sweater vest still in style or no?
What? Of course it's in style.
It's perfect.
All right. Good answer.
Ali, tell them your name.
I just had to check for it.
She says it's fine.
Hello, and my name is Ali, in second grade. And my favorite part about the newspaper club was trying to figure out what I was going to pick for my newspaper.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Avery Corr and I'm in third grade in Ms. Knowles' class. My favorite part about the newspaper club was that we got to learn more things about newspapers. In the newspaper club, I wrote about how to prep for MCAS and if you're new to Saugus, where is a good place to ride your bike? I would love to join the newspaper club again and finally, I would like to take a minute to thank Ms. Baudo for being a great newspaper teacher and so helpful.
Hi, my name is Avalina Delheim. I'm a third grade student in Mrs. Lickerpo's class. My favorite part was getting to make new friends and getting to make the newspaper. I got the newspaper with, I got to make, write the newspaper with my friends. I wrote about school clubs and student behavior and also softball. I would like to give a shout-out to Josh Delheim for helping us with the softball club. I would also like to give a shout-out to Ms. Baudo for being the best teacher ever and helping us make the newspaper club.
My favorite, I also learned how to do narrative writing. I wrote an essay about school clubs. The Spanish and arts and crafts were the most popular.
And the fifth graders, you can kind of point this when you're going to the newspaper.
My name is Trace O'Sullivan, I'm in Ms. Concanon's class 315. I really liked the newspaper club because I liked how kids of any grade got the chance to write something for the school newspaper. I wrote about Mr. Palmarini and his amazing 38 years of teaching different schools and different grades. And yeah, the comic on the screen was made by me and Nolan. I wrote it, he illustrated it.
Good job.
My name is Nolan DeThomas, I'm a fifth grade student in Mr. Conti's classroom 313. I did illustrate the comic with Chase. It was our first project together and I feel like, definitely, I definitely feel like it helped bring out more of an artistic part of me because I feel like I'm never really that good at drawing, but I feel like this definitely gave me some practice. I actually wrote the article on robotics. I really, I wrote it because I really thought it was like one of the best parts of the entire winter here at school. I definitely feel like it should continue. Yeah, that's all I have to say.
Well, you did a great job.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Hashem, just on the newspaper club?
Yep.
Once again, is this something we can incorporate into the everyday? You know, once a month, put out a paper? I think it's, it was really good. I mean, this is unbelievable.
Thank you. And honestly, I want to give all the credit to these teachers. You can see the enthusiasm, the excitement, and then the kids were loving every minute of it and their dedication was really amazing because honestly, you walk around our school, go into the classroom and see what these teachers are doing, the creativity and the enrichment that they're doing anyway within the classroom and the learning, and then this is now an extension of that learning and also, you know, really feeling good and confident about what they're doing and that actually, their public speaking skills, some of the things we were talking about are really going to help them as they continue on up into the higher levels into school. So, you know, we are working to build that and I'm super proud of all of them because it was really amazing. I really want to thank Mr. Hashem and Ms. Turbin for supporting us in getting this going. So, thank you.
You know what, as a committee, thank you.
Yep.
I mean, we really want to thank you. I, I really want to thank the parents too because, you know, good parents make good kids and, and I think you guys have a lot to do with this and to make it work and, and the teachers, so I, I'm, I'm really happy where we're going. I really am.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just want to say, this is the, I think, the best newspaper I've read and we read a lot of newspapers up here, this is the best one I've read in some time and I actually had to buy books for a birthday party I'm going to on Saturday. In the review here, I did good. I bought some good books. I'm very, very, very happy to hear that. I'm going to have to make a return, so thank you all, this is wonderful.
I especially want to say thank you to all the teachers. My mother was an opera singer and I was a dancer, so theater is right up my alley and sometimes I wasn't the one who came home with the A in math. It was more, it taught me how to talk to people, relate with people. Dancing did a lot for me in my life, so kudos to the theater. But thank you all, the teachers, for putting the time in. I know that this is not an easy thing sometimes and thank you very, very much from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Again, kudos to everybody. I, I appreciate what everybody said, but this is a type of learning that we've been talking about and moving the school forward for a long time. The enrichment program with the superintendent and the curriculum coordinators that we're working on throughout the school programs to move the district forward, this is a prime example of just that. To give the teachers the freedom to put on programs that they feel the kids will enjoy and learn from and the lessons that these children are learning that they don't even realize they're learning is amazing. And, you know, again, the support of the parents, what our teachers do that, that don't get show every day is just amazing and for Dr. Lukey to give them the ability to, you know, show their talents and, and share what their students is awesome, so thank you.
Yeah, we'll continue this. We will.
I just got one question from Ms. Lukey. How many, how many kids applied? How many kids?
Sure, we had over 200 kids apply. And we couldn't take all of them and that's why we did the lottery system, but again, this was piloting and with the goal in collaboration with Mr. Hashem and Ms. Turbin, this is our goal is to create this, spark this interest and I think parents loved it as well and kids came home excited. I think it's something to go forward with and, you know, any kind of funding, I know they did this on limited funds, we did get a, a small donation from our school business col- funds. We did get a small donation from our school business collaborative, which was fabulous, that helped us, and just getting up some of the supplies. I know Mr. Bertrand was looking for some golf clubs, and just general things like that. But, but to be honest with you, it's, I think, the interest is there, and it's good to channel that energy for kids after school, to keep them focused and busy doing different things, you know, if parents are working, so that helps, too. But again, if nothing else, I think our teachers really put forth how they were collaborating with kids, giving them critical thinking skills, giving that support, that really helped them feel good about being there. And I think it's, it's a great thing to do.
I think I speak for all of us. She'll have the funding. She'll have the funding.
And I'm so proud of all our students and our staff that participated in this, and this is exactly a small version of what we're hoping to accomplish with that enrichment program that we put in to get funded. So hopefully, that'll go through, and we're looking to expand this, like I said, to all of the buildings. A lot of the same opportunities, I think, would, would be good at the middle school level as well. I think if you look at, at some of the, not the courses, because they're not courses, but some of the groups and the topics, I think they would expand and would, would play out in a middle school level as well. And I think, I credit Dr. Lukey with this, and I thank Ms. Turbin for making this happen with, with her. And I'm just so, so proud of all our students. They've done a great job, and I think more in the future is coming, so.
Thank you.
And that's the end of my report.
It was a long report today, huh?
Yeah. So, moving on to new business, we have approvals of bills dated April 25, 2024, in the amount of $484,716.22.
Motion to approve.
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Acceptance of minutes from April 11, 2024, open school committee meeting.
Motion to approve.
Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, we'll move to public comment. As always, public comment, it should be on the agenda. Ms. Knowles can speak whenever she wants.
Hi, Carrie Hogan, 11 Maple Street. I just had two quick questions. I might have missed follow-up on them. I know that we were going to re-implement PTA meetings. Is that for next year, starting, or?
Parent-teacher conferences.
Yeah.
That's for next year, yeah.
For next year, starting, okay. And then, shoot, I forgot. I had another question, but I forgot. It'll come to me.
No worries, you know how to find it.
And I just want to remind everybody about the town meeting, people listening at home, town meeting's coming up on the 6th. I would like to ask everybody to show up in support of the Student Resource Officer, and just to be a part of the community, it's super important. So just saying my piece. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So, anyone else? You look?
Ms. Davis? Ms. Davis, did you want to get on the microphone? I thought you had your hand up, no? Motion to adjourn? Oh, wait, oh, I thought you were, yeah, absolutely, go, go.
I literally just want to say one thing. I want to give a shout-out to Mr. Fitzgibbons. He was my son's math teacher, and he took the time out to send us a card, and it said, "Hi, Joey, thank you for your hard work on 8th grade math MCAS. Your student growth percentile was 81. You outperformed 81% of your peers in the state from grade 7. Keep working hard. Mr. Fitz." The only reason, it's not to show off my son, it's to say thank you to Mr. Fitzgibbons and Sophia Hennessy, who worked so hard with my son, and I'm sure other teachers did as well, but I just wanted to give a shout-out, because I think that they're just wonderful teachers. So, thank you. Perfect. Thank you.
I just wanted to give one shout-out, too, to Shayla O'Connell. She ran the marathon again this year, eighth time. She's, it just kind of spotlights the amazing people we have in this building, because she's an ABA in my daughter's class, as a matter of fact, and she runs for Boston Children's every year. And she, this year she had my, again, second year in a row, she had my daughter for a patient partner, because my daughter's a patient there. And it's just amazing that, you know, they raise that much money. It's like, I think they have to raise like $10,000 or something, you know, to do it.
Oh, yeah.
And then they train the whole time, and then the day of marathon turns out to be 70 degrees, and it hasn't been 70 since the last year. So I saw a lot of people suffering by the time they got to the finish line, but Shayla and Emily came across with big grins on their faces. It's amazing, it really is, you know. They finished in like five hours or something, you know, which is nuts, in that kind of weather. So, just want to give her a shout-out, and say that, you know, your, your work is appreciated inside the school and outside the school. So, thank you.
Motion to adjourn? Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Awesome.